Want to call this meeting the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees Order, quorum of board members is present. This meeting's been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Go join me in a pledge to the American people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, may be seated. Sue will be here shortly, she is on her way.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're going to begin with our workshop, and Jared's in the appropriate area.
There you go. I just realized my microphone wasn't on, I apologize. Great, well, get us started with an update on our projects.
Absolutely, so tonight we are presenting for the first time two projects for the Lakewood Edition, as well as the Wall Street Auditorium projects. So we'll go through those and then give you a quick highlight on the elementary school and the high school projects, and welcome any questions as we go through there. Tonight, joining me as well again here is Casey Nicholson, so she'll be talking to you about the Lakewood project but is helping out on all the Belton projects here as we move forward from a design perspective. So, as we jump into the Wall Street and Auditorium and Lakewood Edition projects, we've continued with a lot of the same progress that we've had before, meeting with the administration, talking about detailed documents of the scope of work, and really jumping into really the field reviews, and really getting to understand the scope of work to develop a set of documents. So actually, last week, we released the first set of documents to Lou for him to start distributing through the administration and review on those side, and it really kind of details from a constructing documents and specification side, the scope of work that we're here tonight to go through. So, on the Auditorium project, and I realize this is all small writing here, is a little bit of a different project than kind of the Greenfield project, you know, like Lakewood Gym or the elementary school or high school, in the fact that we're really looking to extend the life of the building and really continue its usability for the district over the next 25 years. You know, what are the materials and systems, the items that we really need to address? And so when we started the discussion with the district about how do we improve this facility, we really talked about a lot of different things, different goals, different strategies, we've married that with our trips from the engineers and really looked at the scope, and developed this list that you see here on the screen, and we've roughly outlined these into high, medium, and low priority items, but we know that there are a lot of them that are important along the way, as well as there's some items at the bottom from the alternate bid side that, hey, it'd be nice if we'd be able to do this, but it's not necessarily required today. So we've gone through and reviewed this a couple times with the district, and what I'll point out on the list is you've got the scope of work here at this line, and then you've got a number here to the right, so if you ever come back and reference, those numbers relate to the numbers I'm about to show you on the following slides here as you go through there, it gives you a little bit of a relationship between the two about the entire scope of work. So, to run through those, I'm going to start kind of broad big picture and kind of group them from that standpoint, is start from the site, and so with the graphic you see here in front of you is a graphic of what I'll call is the final product, you'll see a little bit of the underlay of some of the existing conditions, but the primary thing is when we're going into the building, we'll have to comply with American with Disabilities Act, so we'll have to bring five elements in compliance on the building, it'd be parking route, restrooms, drinking fountains, and public telephones, if you have them. Haven't seen a public telephone in a while? Yes, yes it is, but it's still required. And so as we go through here, this graphic, what you'll see is, this is, oh, no, it's not, is it Wall Street? Yeah, okay, sorry. This is Wall Street right here, you have the entrance into the main parking lot here on this side, right here, and then you'll see there's a little bit of a round circle here, and you'll notice that's kind of the park off drop, drop off zone that's currently there, occasionally you'll see vehicles parked in that location. So, one of the first things that we'll be doing is you'll notice that we've converted this area into parking stalls, and so those will be the handicap stalls that serve this portion of the facility. It's a little tough to read, you'll see here in a second, we've added some ramps here in this area, reworked the sidewalk, and basically where there are steps currently directly in front of the building, we've extended those about five to eight feet in front, so it'll be a transition directly into the floor level from that standpoint, but being able to keep the rest of the area relatively untouched from a sidewalk standpoint. So that's item number one. Item number two is the beef paver installation, and so that's the red area that you see right here, and that's really focused on, so the handicap parking stalls are right here, we have the ramp and the ramp coming up, and then the beef pavers are this red area right here, and our focus was, right now, the beef pavers are currently located in front of the high school, and the Beef Foundation really represents the district, the Belton ISD, and so the thought is that we'd be able to transition them here to this campus where every student would come here, some of the elementary school, middle school, high school, as their functions within the auditorium and at the administration building. And then from a functional standpoint, we really saw this as an opportunity to extend the pre-function space or post-function space of the auditorium, because right now, when you come out, there's the sidewalks, but there's not necessarily a gathering area, and so right now, this adds about 300, 350 square feet of additional flatwork area that you could go and experience, but then when you have an event, you can go down and you can find your paver, and then there are opportunities in the future, you know, that would mirror nicely if individuals wish to donate, that you could extend the paver area into that area, and again, make this really a destination from that perspective. And so then tied in with that, we've got building signage that we note here, 24 and 24 right here, and that really leads into the imagery that we're starting to see within the design of the facility. So here, we've again got the ADA parking stalls in improvement, the ramps that would come up, you'll see that the beef pavers are directly behind this wall, and you'll see some signage here, and then another low wall and some signage here on the end, and I'll click through a couple images that you'll see that as we kind of develop. Here, a little bit closer shot, the back end of the beef pavers, right now, we've just used some nomenclature, but the thought would be is that this would be maybe like Corten Steel, maybe a little bit lit that says Wall Street Auditorium, or if it wanted to be named, that would be an opportunity that we could replace that within there, and so then this would be...
You don't hear that, right?
You're in the process, it's easy on out this one. So this would be the view coming from the existing parking lot, walking up to the auditorium, and then this would be just past the auditorium here. So again, you see those beef pavers, we're giving some suggestion of seating in this area, and then you see another sign right here that relates to this sign, I guess you see it best in the first image, which where it says just Belton ISD. And the idea was, as we approach, and you'll see that we've got some trees in here, it was really, the trees have a really nice canopy, they're older trees, we'd love to have them be maintained and existing, but it really kind of shades the front of the building, so when you're on Wall Street and approaching the facility, you can't necessarily see the facade, so putting signage there became a challenge, but this really became a way to really engage the public and the passersby, so everybody as they're going by really sees that, one, this is the Wall Street Auditorium, oh, no worries, apparently my time's up, and then the other one is that it's rated or identified as Belton ISD, and you're starting to really brand the property in the image from there. So, that's the exterior design, and then as we move into the interior design, and I'll skip through these a little bit faster, we're really again looking at refreshing the look and the feel of the building. We're not going to walk in and, you know, see that it's a new Disney Concert Hall, we're going to make it nice and amenable that has a fresh look to it overall. So with that in mind, and I'll describe the scope in general, is that we're going to pull up all the existing chairs, remove the existing flooring, take care of any hazardous materials that are there in place, i.e. asbestos, we're going to paint the existing walls, get rid of the popcorn ceiling, address some of the lighting within there, the stage flooring, we'll have a new curtain, change the smell as much as we can.
That's the most noticeable thing when you walk in. The smell, it smells like 1950.
I think the temperature's the most noticeable thing for me, it's always nice and chilly in there, but that'll be on the next slide. And so we've got ADA access to the stage, so we'll add in a platform lift, so you have accessibility there, we're going to renovate the restrooms here and here to make them accessible as well, and refreshing those finishes within there, and then of course, then the theater seating, and you see everything in there.
What's the seating capacity in the...
So currently, we're, there are 1,000 seats within the facility, and right now, in the initial layout we've gotten from a manufacturer, they're showing about 850 seats within there, and there's some options that we're going to...
Yeah, that's great.
I was going to say, it's always been so tight in there, are you going to have a little more space in between so people can actually walk?
So, right now, we're going to look at using 19, 20, and 21 inch chairs, and there will be increased distance between, from front of chair to back of chair.
People were smaller in 1950, apparently, I don't...
Mine needs to be switched to seats in front of me.
So there'd be different spacing requirements, and so right now, what you'll also see is that we've got some cutouts here, 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 and here to meet ADA accessibility, and we have to have what they call horizontal and vertical dispersion within that requirement, so basically it's spread throughout the location, as well as we're starting to create a niche here for videoing, so that could benefit during school plays, if somebody was, wanted to record Johnny and Suzie up front, that there's a key location there that would have some tie-ins for audio and those kind of things, or if there's a more formal event, a board meeting, or some sort of public meeting, that would be another locale that, you know, if the media came, that they would have the opportunity to plug in at that point and get some audio out of that.
We're not going to build in projector?
We haven't gotten there yet, but yes, there's some, there's a discussion about that as well. Yep, so MEP, I won't go through all this list, basically we're upgrading the MEP systems, air handling units, we're supporting the restrooms, we are improving the house lighting and the stage lighting, so we've been kind of talking about this in terms of being at the elementary school level, it won't be a huge performing arts venue with fly lofts and, you know, track, or spotlights and those kind of things, but it'll have multiple lighting options within there to be supportive of the events that are there.
It's important to note, this has been and will be our largest seating capacity auditorium in our school district.
Correct.
And that's significant and important to our community, and so a lot of, it's important that that will continue to be, but modernized.
Yep, exactly. And so then we'll get into electrical panel, replacement, grounding, and fire alarm system. And so that's one key where we have been talking with the city of Belton already, we went and met with them to talk about the scope of work, the original building was built in the late 60s, from what we can tell, there aren't existing drawings, but if you built this today, the code requirements would be very different today than what is built there currently, and so we're very aware of that, and having that discussion early with the city, staff have participated in those discussions as well. So right now, the elements that we're putting into the building will be brought into compliance, and then there are a few things that we're doing, like the fire alarm will help negate some other requirements in terms of fire suppression and those kind of things that we're working with the city on from there, that would be a current code requirement. So then that gets into some medium priority items, where we get into chilled water pump replacement, the roof replacement, it's that, the picture on the bottom right, roof is approximately 30 years old is our understanding, and needs some love, so that's where we'll add in the insulation and come back in there, we've touched the signage, and then there is some discussion about whether or not we would create some sort of board dais, or is there a projection and microphone system within that? So whether that's a screen on the stage that's reverse throw, or if it's on the side, we're kind of working through that at this time, and whether or not there's physically something built in from a board element, or if it's more furniture that's put in, you know, that's more flexible within that environment, we're working through those details here over the coming month. And then finally, we ran through these about having this as an option for voting precinct, and right now I am showing it on the stage, but I think it's been developed that we want to add some additional electrical in the front area here instead of on the stage, so that there's a, you're just coming in and out of that area, and then an option maybe to replace the lobby serving and countertop area. And so then the final items, and these are the kind of the items that, hey, it'd be great if we replace them, they're in working order, they're in areas not generally used, but there's an air cooled chiller that's about 10 or 15 years old, still probably has another 10 years of life within it, but hey, if we can afford a replacement, have it all new, that would be great, getting into then chilled water piping replacement, DDC system, and then a couple things for the dressing rooms and the exhaust fans within that design. So, that is the auditorium concept, so right now, again, it's a little bit different of, can't talk to you about the brand new big building and how those are going in, but it's a lot of different elements that are coming together from a scope of work that we're going through and documenting and really working to make sure that we have some cost control with the alternates, so the district can seamlessly move into construction from that standpoint.
Looks good, it's exciting, that's an important facility in our community, it would be great to be modernized, excited about seeing it develop.
Any questions on that one?
You talked about demo on the floor and the...
Yep.
I mean, we're talking about, if we looked into going over the top of existing, were just damaged enough?
The tiles are actually coming up already, so that, we really need to go through and do that, rather than encapsulate it.
Pull those chairs out of there too, they're bolted in.
So, any other questions?
Good, let's go Lakewood.
Well then, we'll move over to Lakewood, and I'll let you here.
I'm not tall enough. Hi, I think I've met many of you before, I've been working on a couple of the different projects here in the district, so I'm going to talk to you about the addition to Lakewood Elementary School. When we first started this process, you know, we understood that we wanted to add our enclosed gyms in existing campuses that didn't have attached gyms, you know, a lot of them in the pre-engineered metal buildings, and so when we first met to discuss this project, it was understanding what was included in that scope, and we, in the development of that, it was also understood at this campus that the music department, or the music classrooms are currently housed in portable, portable facilities, and so we encompass everything together here, and so this addition will include not only a new gymnasium, but it'll include two music rooms and associated support for both of those functions, in the development of this, we also added some group restrooms. Lakewood has adequate restroom facilities, a comfortable number, but as we're adding this onto the building, it was decided we want to provide more, this will be helping out for the kids coming in at recess, and this is not putting a tax on the area of the building we're adding to.
Never enough restrooms in it.
Never. Kids, you know, they're so patient about it. And so, on the graphic on the left called Site Plan Concept, you'll see the main building up to the north, it's got a couple different roof tones, and unfortunately, the roof tones don't correspond directly. How do I tap on? All right, so up here, this original building is late 80s, 86 I believe, and then this southern, I'm not tall enough guys, the southern part down here was added in early 2000s, and so our addition down to the bottom in red will be onto the existing buildings, and we're going to directly connect to the board members, I believe your original packet might have shown this red building slid down a little bit, the intent is to physically attach it to the main building, and so it's an interior flow of traffic. I wasn't sure what graphic you guys had on your...
It's attached.
Okay, it is attached, then we're all set there. And so the idea is that you'd be coming down the hallway, which is currently a classroom neighborhood, you'd be coming down the hallway directly into the new addition, we've got a wide corridor here that services the music rooms to the south, and then at the end of the corridor is the basketball, oh, the, sorry, the basketball court, the gymnasium, and then you'll notice we circle, we circle back up here to another exit, the current circulation on the site is the bus traffic over here, and currently the students are queuing up inside this academic hallway, and so by adding another outlet here, this allows some queuing space before and after school.
Can you do that?
I apologize, I was making sure the audience could see, and so you come out of the main building here, or the existing building, down this corridor, and the corridor makes essentially a U, so on the south side, we have the music classrooms and associated support rooms, and at the end of the corridor, we have the gymnasium, and then we circle back up, and so this door out here services this parking lot, which is actually where the bus queuing occurs, and so this will allow some interior protection for kids coming to and from the buses, depending on how you, how the principal decides to use it in the future, you know, you might end up queuing some of the kids in the gymnasium, for example. I forgot to mention early on in this process, we did meet, besides the administrative staff, we did meet with the principal, the gym teacher, and the music faculty to get some input and help guide the process, and we've also met with the city of Temple, again, with some district representatives to understand the code implications of this, and fully do our research there. Again, we are attaching to a, an existing building, and we obviously want to bring the new addition up to modern standards, but understanding, that's the right way to say that, understanding that we can't get necessarily, saying wording wrong, we, just understanding how this is going to tie into the existing building. On the exterior, you'll notice we've got some masonry, and this horizontal striping is meant to basically mimic the existing building, so you're not going to notice a huge difference between the addition, I mean, it is its own style. In discussions with both the principal and the administrative staff here, you know, you'll notice if you've ever been out to Lakewood, West Adams Avenue, I forget the number, I think it's 2238 coming along here, the school main entrance is actually up over here, doesn't really have a strong presence from the street, and so we're hoping that this new addition, being a little bit taller, there might be a nice signage opportunity on the exterior to sort of highlight the campus.
And I really like the, the little teeny type name, although if it was about twice as big, I'd really, really like it.
Yeah, the teeny type, you'd like it a little more, a little more vibrant.
Right, just bigger, so it's actually viewable from 2305, that'd be good, great, great addition, great idea.
Yeah, I think it's an efficient use of space, I think it helps solve the campus.
And just, just to clarify, I mean, I think when, at least when we started dreaming about this, and for years, I've always thought it would be a replacement in the back of what we already have, but this makes construction essentially non-disruptive to the school day, they can continue to do what they do even while this construction's going on.
That is correct, and it's my understanding that they've decided to keep them, to maintain the pre-engineered metal building, their current gym facility, which is in the rear of the site, they have some util, wow, I'm sorry, what do I need to do?
The location was selected to improve the operations of that bus loop, and so that was the main thinking that, and then of course, the benefit is to have the, to improve the frontage and the signage of the school on 2305, and another benefit is to not disrupt classes and have to move kids, we wouldn't have a place for those music classrooms.
But we will pull those old portables.
Portables will go, the metal buildings will visit about.
So it offsets the space lost in that playground, front playground, space in the back.
The gym faculty was actually quite pleased, this is their existing playground and track and everything, and so they're not able to utilize it much for gym, because by the time these kids traipse all the way down to the front of the campus or through the building, it takes quite a toll, and now they'll have direct access directly out to the track.
There really are a lot of advantages for that, and also just for use, a lot of our PTAs have programs in their gyms, and it's, you wander through the building, but the gyms that are in the front of the schools can do that much easier.
And that was part of the addition of these restrooms, that came out of our faculty meetings and staff meetings, is understanding that, you know, technically we have enough restrooms up here, by code, technically, like I said, there's always a line on it, but this allows you to close off this portion of the building, and just open this up for evening access, should you choose to use it for community events.
Great, great advantage, looks like a lot of, a lot of good ideas, just as a reminder to the board, this is basically what we did at Sparta 10 years ago or so, is the gym and two music rooms just like this, on that east side of Sparta, and again, how you can use that, easily accessible, great idea, I like that, it's exciting.
We also thought that not only can we move students to music and PE through the hallway of that first grade classroom wing there, but we could also, they could also walk around the sidewalk, straight to the cafeteria, or from the cafeteria to the gymnasium, and so it seemed to be a really nice location to...
Yes, currently the students...
There's a lot of, a lot of advantages to that location, I've always assumed it'd be back there where it was, but that makes so much more sense to do that, it would be great to get input from users.
They were very helpful.
Have you thought about covering that back there, the bus drop off area? Covering sidewalk, covering all of those?
Back behind, right there where the bus loop is?
Yes, ma'am.
No, we haven't talked about that, but we certainly could put that on a capital projects list, or as an alternative.
They right now drop off, they loop around and go in the other wing out on the west bow.
The layover stages outside.
Would that be on the actual gymnasium, Leo, or is that what you're thinking about?
You could do the construction all at once, add on to it more.
Right now, we will have a minimum of cover over that door, and we can look at an alternate to just add, add some, some sidewalk covers.
Good suggestion.
Great. Good deal. Any other questions, comments? Good update, excited about both of these projects, significant upgrades.
We're excited as well, and that brings us into next month, actually, last week, we released these documents for review by the district, today we are publishing an internal check set for the elementary preparing for next month, and then on Wednesday, we released the high school 100% DD documents for review by the district and pricing by Bartley-Cock. So these two weeks have been very busy for us, all prepping up really for the October meeting, which is when, or October, where we plan to release all three of these projects for bidding, the goal is to receive bidding before the Thanksgiving break, and that we would bring, or we would have then at that point, recommendations for a ward of bid in December, so construction can start maybe January, February timeframe for the projects, depending upon how everything works out, for the elementary school, Lakewood, and Wall Street projects. So, high school project will continue on through March of next year in design, but that, we'll continue making progress on those.
And just to add to that, lose tracking all these items too, right?
Oh, yes.
Looking at and saying how we can save some dollars on items and, okay, that's what we're counting on you to do, is to...
Keeping us on, honest.
Is to, is to keep an eye on architects and contractors and help us save money wherever we can, so appreciate your role in that, want to make sure the board understands we have, have added a position, just because we've got a lot of projects and we want to make sure that Jared has got somebody watching him, you know, he's great.
Thank you.
Keep watch, right?
Yes, sir.
Good deal, awesome. Any other questions? Appreciate the report.
The cute stuff.
All right, well, the next item, we get a little update on our continuing progress of naming the high school name, mascot, and colors, you going to get us started?
I am, I'm going to start and then pass it to Dr. Muller in just a few minutes, but I will get us started, we've been working on this since August, and our goal for this month, let's see if we can get all the way back to the beginning there, next slide, our goal for this month was to get some guidance from the board on the general approach for the name, mascot, and colors for the new high school, and at the beginning, we outlined just as a reminder, some questions, some key, key questions for the process, and those were, should we have the same colors and mascot as other Belton schools, and should the colors and mascot be substantially similar but slightly differentiated, or should the colors and mascot be entirely new? So we're, those were the things that we said we wanted to think about throughout this process, and we've collected a lot of data, and so this evening, we want to get your guidance on answering those questions, and we want to provide you with some preliminary options based on the data that we see, and see how you'd like to funnel that down or not for this month. So, as you, as you'll recall, of course, our most frequently asked question throughout the entire bond election process is, what's, what's the new name of the school going to be, what's color, what are the school colors going to be, and what will the mascot be? And you have been collecting data about that for a very long time now.
Yes, we have.
You have, not only have you collected that formally throughout this process, but you've talked to people at football games, you've talked to people at grocery, at the grocery store, you've talked to your friends, to your family, you've read about people's ideas on social media, if you followed any of the, the comments there, and so you have already been formulating and listening to the data that's out there, and so what's important, I think, about all of that is that you've done a really good job of listening to the community and really trying to, to understand the perspective of a lot of people all over the community, and that came through, you'll go, this slide, that came through to us as, or to me, as I read the comments from all of the questions that were open-ended from... from the survey, that, that our community was very appreciative of the opportunity to weigh in on these issues. And there were, there were many comments of thankfulness for the process and for the opportunity to share.
Although a few people kept saying, why are you even asking? The answer is so obvious to them.
True.
But of course, people have very diverse views on.
Big community. It's a large school district. During the month of August, you had two community meetings and two student meetings to gather input. And those, again, were really great sessions, a really a great opportunity for the board to listen. And then from August the 7th to the September the 8th, this survey was conducted through an online survey. So tonight, we want to share with you what we learned. So first, just a little background information. This survey was posted, it surveyed respondents about the characteristics important to them when deciding on the name, colors and mascot for the new school. Our respondents were asked to rank specific characteristics or qualities they found important. And they weren't required to answer all of the questions. And there were opportunities for them to provide written comments and feedback. And boy, did they ever. There's a lot of comments and feedback. We had 1,877 people who participated in the online survey. Next slide. And here's who participated. You can see that respondents, respondents could identify themselves in more than one category. So those add up slightly higher than the 1,800. Parents and alumni by far represented the largest number of respondents to the survey. The next slide. We took the top, so when we did, went through the long range facilities planning process, we asked our community what they valued about Belton ISD. And the result of that was a word cloud that's actually sitting down there by Mr. Norwood. Those are the words that were most frequently described, used to describe Belton ISD. So we took the top 12 words that were generated during that long range facilities planning process and asked our community to rank the qualities that they felt would be most important when the first senior class graduates from the new high school in 2023. And here are the top five words that were ranked the highest from our community. One being community, two, prepared, three, successful, four, student centered, and five, integrity. Now, on the next slide, those words are put into a word cloud just to demonstrate the frequency of those words. But we also added some qualitative words that were frequently mentioned in the last question of the survey, which asked for additional feedback and comments. Words like unity and individuality came out as qualitative words there. So in keeping, in keeping, keeping in mind how these qualities and characteristics have guided our work during the long range facilities planning process, I want to ask Dr. Muller to come up. And he's going to review with you the data that was collected specifically on the name, the colors and the mascot. Dr. Muller.
And while you're coming up, I mean, thank you again for facilitating our, our community forums. Did a great job with, with our community members who came in addition, especially with our students, engaging them and helping them share their opinions in a great way. So thank you for your work.
I appreciate the opportunity to, to do that. That was very enjoyable.
I kept saying every night, I'd say, this is going to be fun. And you'd say, yes, it is. And it was. We'd leave and say, that was fun. So.
Well, as Dr. Kinkan indicated, that you engaged in a process that included the four meetings, but it also included the opportunity for people throughout the community to register their opinions to an online survey. And so the things I'm going to go through are the results of that online survey. And lots of people did participate. So next slide. There you go. So first of all, on the name. Individuals who took the survey were asked to, it was kind of a forced choice, rank what was most important with respect to a name from one to five. And they were given these choices. And so the one that came out at the top was that the name reflect Belton. And what's interesting is that you can see there that number, perhaps you can't in the audience, but says 1,162 respondents. So 1,162 respondents indicated their choice on these name characteristics. And what you see reflected there is also kind of what we heard through those four meetings. So it's not, those two things are very aligned. And you see that alignment, not only in the name characteristics, but also in the colors and the mascot, which we're going to get to here in a minute. So it reflects Belton was the first, and then indicates location was the second. And those two were kind of separated in terms of rank order from be unique, be named after an important person or a historical event, which was least desired amongst those who took the survey. Next slide. Well, that was the forced choice question. And then there was an open-ended question, which gave anyone who was a respondent the opportunity to actually make comments around name. And so 869 responses were recorded there. So 869 people took the time to either make a comment. And many of those comments reflected a name that they recommend to the board and to the district. And you can see that location is, and Belton are very much reflected in those names that were suggested. Belton North, North Belton, Belton High Point, Lake Belton. In fact, Lake and North were reflected over and over and over again throughout the survey. And then a couple of other names that were reflected, Belton Memorial was in there and Belton High Point was in there as well.
You know, I might ought to wait, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it now. I'll go ahead and stop now. We're going to get in. There'll be so many thoughts here.
Sure.
Contrary to what you might have read in the newspaper or online, I haven't talked to those people who said what I, my opinion is. So let me share what my opinion is. I like, I mean, clearly Belton has to be in the name based, if we go with feedback and based on what I've heard. I really liked the Belton Lakeview for three reasons. One, it had Belton in it, just like Belton High School, Belton New Tech High School at Wasco. And so it fit our high school pattern. It does not repeat a term we already use for middle schools, which is a concern. I've heard several times, people mentioning if we did Lake Belton or North Belton, it would be confusing. The third one is, the first time I heard it was from students, our middle school students, potential first students at the high school. And so that one stood out to me. As I've read through this, just thought this through, the idea of Belton North Lake makes sense though, because you just said, Dr. Muller, Lake and North came out repeatedly. In theory, way down the line, there's a third high school. It's south, we have two lakes in our school district area. And it would fit that. So to me, at least what jumps off the page is Belton Lakeview or Belton North Lake. So that's just, just my opinion thrown out there. What I've heard, it fits all the criteria for where we're at. Anybody got an opinion? Thought? Different?
That's coming. Yes. Yeah. When we get through, I'd love to.
Okay.
And you mentioned unique, and that was kind of a, somewhat of an embedded question throughout the survey. Should it be unique with respect to the name or the colors or the mascot? Or should it be the same? And it is a little, there is a little bit of a difference, but it tended to be unique as opposed to the same. And you see that reflected, but it's close. It's very close.
Yep.
All right. Next slide. Okay. So to kind of get a sense of some of the comments about names, let me, these are hard to read. So let me just read them to you, kind of starting from the left and moving to the right. First bullet there or call out says, make it obvious it is a Belton school. The second one says, the name still has to have Belton in it while still being its unique and separate identity. Third one says, location and Belton should be the most important things in the new high school title. And then the fourth caption there says, all Belton schools are connected in some way or another, and then they have pride in quotes. I would like to see it as its own, but still connected somehow. And that, that really kind of captures this whole thing about names connected to Belton, but keep it unique. That seemed to be the common theme around the name. Next slide. Okay, moving on to mascot and colors. Question that was the forced answer was, as you think about the colors and mascot, what characteristics are most important to you? And you can see the number down there is 968 individuals responded to that question and completed that and recorded those different items. And certainly at the top is shared identity, closely followed by unique and distinctive.
Which is that great. How do we be the same but different?
Exactly. That is it.
That's great.
You see that over and over and over again in the survey. So moving on to the open-ended comments, next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. So this is a word, wordle that shows the representation of the different colors that were imagined or just suggested. And certainly that whole theme about unity and cohesiveness caused red to be the predominant color that was mentioned, both in the overall comments and also in the four meetings that we had with different, different audiences. And that's followed by white. And then you see other, other choices there. Black, purple, orange, gold, green, gray, silver, blue, yellow. Now, white and red were also mentioned in terms of other colors as well. So whether it's red and black or red and purple, and sometimes even with three, three combinations of colors, red, white and blue was one suggestion, red, white and silver. So the red is definitely seen as the unifying color throughout the comments that were made. Next slide. And then to give you a sense of the color, of the comments about color, again, from left to right, it says, needs to be red and something. Big red, enough said.
The something isn't as important as the red. That's correct.
Having colors that are distinctive to the school will make it stand out on its own. Colors would show that it's a Belton school and unique for that particular school. And then the final comment that's listed up there is, I would like to see red as one of the colors. And that was, again, pervasive throughout the people who commented around colors. All right. Now mascot. Here are the mascot names that appeared the most. And again, this is a wordle. So the larger the, the type, the more it was reflected. And so you see that it's a virtual type between Bengals, Tigers and Bobcats. And so that whole notion, which was talked about in the four meetings as well, about some mascot that's in the cat family, again, goes back to that unifying concept of how can we be this, you know, how can we maintain our identity yet be unique? And so you see that kind of reflected in these suggestions around, around the mascot. And then some of the open-ended comments that were made. Once a tiger, always a tiger. It should stay the same. It should be different and unique so that when the two schools compete, they are distinctive. Have a tiger mascot in a different manner like the Bengals. Colors and mascot should be different than the current high school. I believe that any other school district in the state that has multiple high schools do not share the same colors or mascot. So the new school needs to be its own and start its own traditions. Okay, next slide. Okay, so those are the results of the survey. We reflect back on possible names. You have from the survey and from the four meetings, North Belton High School. And certainly you can make combinations of these, these different names. Belton North High School, Belton Lakeview High School, Lake Belton High School, Belton Lake High School. And certainly, if you all have some suggestions to add, you might want to delete some of these. I think this, this discussion tonight is to help us begin to refine what might be brought back at a future board meeting for the final decision.
It would be a good idea for us at this point to kind of narrow that down and perhaps come up with, is, is, can we narrow the field at least? I mentioned adding Belton North Lake as you were talking. Do they have thoughts on possible names? What you're leaning towards based on feedback you've received from all our different avenues? Want to jump out there?
I like the Belton Memorial. When I went online and did the survey myself, that was one that I had heard. I didn't come up with that one. But I had heard Belton Memorial, and it was an opportunity for us to memorialize people from our community, primarily fallen military heroes from our community. I like that idea to be called Belton Memorial. There's a lot of different memorial high schools across the state. But I just thought, that's been my favorite one so far. But personally, I think keeping Belton in the name is, is paramount to what we're doing. I think that's overall, we, we know that's the community.
Heard that consistently.
Belton because of the unique situation we have that this high school is in a completely different city, with more torrent, with mob and the growth. I think over time, that community, it's going to bring those little, those areas together as its own unique community. Like Park and High School with Ben Colleen has its own kind of identity. So I think keeping Belton in the, in the name is, is very important. And I like the memorial part of it. So.
Hey, so is anybody not like, let me narrow it down. Does anybody not like having Belton in the name? I mean, is that, is that one we're in agreement on? That we've heard, all heard that pretty consistently? Okay. What else? What do you prefer?
My personal preferences are, you know, along the lines of Randy. I like, I like the Lakeview. I like your new suggestion. Those are good. I think to do it just North Belton High School, it just seems so generic to me. It just, and I know that there were a lot of people, some people said they liked the directional names because it helped them understand. Other people said it's just boring.
Right.
So that would be my only two cents on the name.
Okay.
My thoughts on the name, and I like the sound of yours too, Randy. I, I like Lake Belton or Belton Lake because the lake is such a fixture in the community. The areas that Ty is talking about are all focused around the lake area. When I think of those communities and those areas, I think about the lake. And also, I think statewide, you know, our, this high school's name will appear in documents and records and newspapers and whatever statewide. And to me, Lake Belton is an attraction to the area. It's geographically known throughout the state. And to me, that, that's an attractive name. One of those two. I don't know which. The, my only concern about the North Lake is, like you were talking about, is south, a third high school in the south is called it South Lake. There is a South Lake, Texas.
I've heard of that, but yeah.
Not that that should be a determining factor, but could get a little confusing.
Not when we beat them. Oh, sorry.
But I like Lake Belton or Belton Lake personally.
Okay. Let's.
I'm actually with my, the Lake Belton and Belton Lake High School are the two that, and probably because the table I was sitting at with the high school students, that was where they came down. That's, the table I was sitting at, that was what they liked. And I was like, you know what? I hadn't thought about it. But yeah, it is Lake Belton High School or Belton Lake. Same reason he said, I mean, I think it's unique. It is different. It is, you know, such a big part of this community.
Okay. Y'all want to throw in?
I personally like, like Lake Belton High School for all the aforementioned reasons.
I personally like, like Lake Belton High School for all the aforementioned reasons.
Wow, she's never talked that quickly. I, I have mixed emotions about it all. I do like the fact that directional, I like the fact that it's, it's, it's close to the lake, North Lake looks, sounds great. I, I fall back to like, liking the Belton Memorial as well. I'm on the fence either way about that and I think as long as we own it, I don't think it truly matters to be honest with me.
So it sounds like lake is a, there's a some commonality, Memorial also, but would you do, I mean, it is, we have a Lake Belton Middle School. Is there a concern that there's some confusion with Lake Belton Middle School, Lake Belton High School? Janet, you, you would say there's some concern about that?
I think it's just too similar.
If, you know, it's, if you look on the map and how it's officially named, it's Belton Lake. It's not like Belton, which may just confuse it even worse. I don't know.
Right, I don't know. I don't know that flipping it is the answer.
So which is why why I was liking the Lakeview or North Lake, but I hear you. Janet, you want to? Well, we're not voting on this, by the way, at this point. What we're trying to do is narrow down. Could we, I mean, in, in the end, I'll go back to early discussion. We said ultimately this comes down to a decision, it's just a choice we're going to make. And some people are going to like it and some people may not. But it sounds like at least the majority of us like something with lake in it. Is that a fair assessment?
If that's the case. And I'm, I'm just asking because we had the, well, the Belton Memorial, but if we are just narrowing it down, which is all we're doing right now, you could add the one that you have. And then
I may not, I'm on it with
The North Belton and Belton North were the two that kind of nobody seemed to jump out and say they wanted those two.
Right, so it's, so we might, exactly, we might can start eliminating options and say if we're, nobody mentioned North Belton or Belton North. Is that correct? So pretty quickly, let's strike those off of the list. Right.
So Randy, if we did go with Lake Belton High School, what do we do with the middle school?
Right.
Don't want that one school tied to it. So, I mean, what would you do? I, I don't like that idea of having
Isn't Belton, when we redo the nine, what will it be opened as?
Presumably Belton Middle School is what it was before.
Right.
So it's Belton Middle School.
Right.
Yeah, so we have a Belton Middle School and a Belton High School, so there is some precedent to that.
They haven't named that school yet.
We haven't, we haven't talked about that officially, but we assumed that it would be
It was Belton Middle.
We, we said when we, it was a short term, we were moving and we'd re-change it into the nine and then it'd go back to being Belton Middle School. So I think we've all along said that in theory, we can change the name of anything. We could change the name of Belton High School if we wanted to, although I can't imagine we would want to go through that process at this point. But, but Ty, go back to your question, I think it's a good question. Does it create a concern? And for me, that was an important, I wanted something different because I heard, again, I keep hearing people say I want the same but unique. I want the same but different. And that's the same Belton, but with something a little bit different, Lakeview. And I, I thought that was a good way of doing it and I think there might be a view towards the lake and maybe from that top floor. Jared, put a drone up there and see if we can see the lake from there, I don't know. Or up on a hill. I, I, that one stood out to me. Mike's concerned about North Lake, South Lake, I don't know. But it's a directional, it's a, it's an identifiable name, so can we, can we further narrow that down or are we, is that where we want to be in? I mean, at some point, and we got to get through the next two areas, but we want to bring this back and resolve this thing. And that's, I think all of us have expressed, we just want to get past this too, so. Yeah, eventually we just have to choose. So can we, you want to narrow down and keep five options as an opportunity or do you want to eliminate anymore? We've eliminated North Belton and Belton North. You want to eliminate anything else? Those of you that like Lake Belton or Belton Lake, do you have a preference on one of those? Or do you want to keep them both as an option? Hearing no consensus, we'll leave it there. So it sounds like we're narrowed down, we've narrowed down to five at this point for us to wrestle with. So let's, let's keep going. Okay, and see if we can. Well, those of you that said that you like the lake and the name said that though, and I don't want to eliminate by those who didn't say that. Yeah.
I like both of the Belton, with the lake in it, either Lake Belton or Belton Lake.
Right, so we do, if there's a desire to keep that as an option, you, you might not get a second, but on one of them, but we're, this is going to be an interesting process when we get down to deciding. Again, the fewer options we have, the easier this is going to be. We've got to keep narrowing this.
Ty on Memorial, is, is there any?
I much prefer the lake dynamic on that one, but
I hear you Ty, I think it's, it's a valid option. It just, you know, at this point, I feel like the majority of people are leaning towards the lake part, so it's, I don't feel like it's going to get to the top of the list.
Just haven't heard the, the feedback from the community is that's something that got traction. I heard it certainly from a handful, but not, it didn't get the traction like all the other ones have. So that's where I am on it. I want to be responsive to the community. So.
I like it and I like the thought behind it. It's not one that I that I would probably go with, but it's the only one that's non-directional.
Yeah.
Right.
So it's unique. Okay, so at this point, it sounds like it wouldn't get a, I don't at this point, we have Belton Lakeview, Lake Belton High School or Belton Lake High School, Belton Memorial maybe, and maybe North Lake. And, and I'm not, I just threw that one out there and if that's more confusion, I'll, anybody else want North Lake? I'll withdraw it. If nobody else is, is interested in it, I want, I like Belton Lakeview best for the reasons I said before. I love that I heard it first from middle schoolers.
I'll throw in North Point.
North Point.
Or Lake Point.
Lake Point. You've added two more.
Not North Point. Not North Point, Lake Point.
Lake Point, you want to add another lake?
I'm just saying, it's an option.
Lake Point. What, Belton Lake Point? Yep.
Because it's right there by High Point.
Anybody, okay, is anybody else?
Remember we talked about the acronym thing though, whenever the two leaders are doing their thing, that's going to be a tough one.
Okay, so, so does anybody else want to, want to add? Let's see, if there's two or, how's it, how's this for consensus that if there's two or more of us that want it remained on the list for discussion, we'll leave it. How's that? Are two or more of us want Belton Lakeview High School? Yes.
Yeah.
We are not voting. We're, we're not officially voting here. Are two or more of us want Lake Belton High School? Are two or more of us want Belton Lake High School? There are two or more? Okay, we got a couple of those. Are there two people who want Belton Memorial High School? Ty, and is there a second?
I still like the way it sounds. I don't know if it's going to make the, if it's going to make the vote in the community.
The community is not voting, we seven are the only ones voting. Exactly, we're representing. So do you, are you want to be the second one to keep it on the list?
Sure.
Okay, well, we're not narrowing it. Is North Lake, is no, Belton North Lake have two? No, we're going to take that one off the list. Does Belton North Point, no, Lake Point, sorry, Belton Lake Point have two? Does anybody want to go with Janet on that one, keeping it on? Okay, so, so we're down to four? Is that right?
I have four. Lakeview.
We've gotten down to four that we're going to wrestle with until next month. Let's
Or I have our Lakeview, Lake Belton, Belton Lake.
We made progress, we've narrowed down from about three dozen to the top dozen and then to six or seven and then to four. Great, those are, right now are the four that we are considering, we're not voting tonight, we're not, this isn't final. We may have an epiphany later and change our minds. A lot of things could happen, but at this point. I'll tell you what, I'm going to ask a, a board question. It is six o'clock or almost, you know, it's right at six o'clock. We have a few students and staff to recognize. Would you be all, all be okay with us pausing this discussion, recognizing our students and then we can come back to this? Great, let's do that. Let's see them out in the hall, let's do that and take a break and I, I'm not, we're going to take a break from this discussion and let's bring our students in and, and pick that up. Thank you, Dr. Muller, we'll be right back with you. Okay, thank you all for joining us and waiting on us, you could have come in. So excited to recognize, one of the things we like to do at all of our meetings is recognize our students and our staff. And we're so glad you could join us this evening. Let me remind you, anybody who's here, family members, we love to take pictures and we will take as much time as you want to take pictures of our students or staff. What we'll do is at each section that we recognize, each group, we'll have you come up to the front. We're going to start with some of our students, Military Child Education Coalition National Training Seminar Student Summit. So we're going to we're going to talk about you, but why don't y'all come up and we've got a certificate for you on behalf of the board and take your photo, so come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Pitt and Jerry. So the first group is the Belton High School student to student team of Kasey Cheek, Amanda D. Vergillis and Gracie Creek, who were selected to attend the Military Child Education Coalition National Training Seminar July 30th through August 2nd in Washington DC. S2S is a student-led program from the Military Childhood Education Coalition that brings military-connected children and civilian students together to welcome new students, create a positive environment and support academic success. The sponsor for BHS S2S program is Carol Orman.
So, so you all went, and in addition to, I meant to bring the, the certificate, you were able to receive the certificate as the Big Red Community and the Great Place Part, Community Partnership of Excellence Award. But you also got to do some great training and, and planning for S2S. You want to give us a brief? Tell us what you did and what you learned? Anything? I didn't prep you for this, is anything you want to say?
Even though Boeing isn't as close to Fort Worth as any other police station, we do have such a free military population. So a lot of it was just doing the utmost to play for all the kids, all the new kids that come in and making them feel welcome and felt it was a home rather than like they may still be. We also attended a lot of student life seminars. So I had been in a recent and sustained seminar for our S2S group led by students from California. They have an amazing S2S program and that was actually so helpful. They know how to control and how to train the child to be a group. We also got to listen to amazing teachers like Bill Biden, Bill Golden, and I really appreciated his name as a psychologist that we were taught like how to control a room when you walk into a boardroom. And it was just an amazing experience.
And you're demonstrating it, aren't you?
It was Dr. Ken Ginsberg.
Yeah, Dr. Ginsberg. Well, thank you for representing us and the, one of the reasons we were awarded the exemplary community partnership because of the work you do and, and Carol Orman's great job of sponsoring this wonderful program. Year in and year out, we, we have students selected and recruited to attend these events. So y'all did a great job, thank you for representing us, we're proud of you and thank you for your work at Belton High School to make a difference for our new students, all of our new students, right? We're proud of you all.
In Washington DC, need to ask Mr. Pitt for
Got to take the, these young ladies on a, on a, a night tour of the monuments. After all, everything was over late night, we were at the monuments, great time. Okay, the Rotary Educator of the Month from the Temple Rotary Club.
Yeah, we're blessed to have outstanding educators in our district and so we have a couple to recognize tonight. From the Temple, the Temple Rotary Club would like to recognize Elizabeth Hausen for her service to Belton. She is an eighth grade social studies teacher at North Belton Middle School and she's in her 12th year of education.
Robert, come on up here, this is appropriate. We have the president of the Temple Rotary Club present in our midst that we're going to recognize in just a minute, but why not?
So interestingly, Ms. Hausen had actually initiated the junior historians at North Belton Middle School and coached seven students to compete at the regional level. And all seven received awards and two qualified for the state competition and they finished in second place and qualified for the National History Day Competition in Maryland. And her eighth grade team finished fifth in the nation. And it's my understanding that there were competitors from around the world, not just within our nation there, so congratulations. Joe Brown, principal at North Belton stated, thanks to Elizabeth's hard work and dedication to her students, she's managed to help her students achieve national recognition and spark a true interest in history. The success of this first group will be a catalyst for an increasing number of junior historians at North Belton Middle School.
We are so proud of you. And so thankful for what you did and the opportunity you gave our students. It was so fun to follow along this summer and the excitement that you were having and wow, what a great opportunity for us. Ty, you want to add?
My eighth grade daughter, Gracie, is probably out of my three children, the most like me and that's scary. And she's been coming home this year talking a lot about history and how excited she was. Oh Dad, I love history and I'm thinking, wow, what's the deal? Well, last week I went to meet the teacher and I, and I got to see why my daughter is rubbing the subject.
Great job, great, awesome, proud of you. And thank you to the Temple Rotary Club for hosting her last week and honoring her with this, appreciate y'all. All right, well, so how about the Belton Rotary Club Educator of the Quarter?
Yeah, so Angie Guzman is being recognized for her service. She's a first grade bilingual teacher at Southwest Elementary and she's in her 10th year in education and her 16th year with Belton IST. And Ms. Guzman models what she expects from her students. Her positive attitude and high expectations have helped to establish a classroom where her students feel safe, secure and excited about learning. She served as grade level leader and continually demonstrates professionalism and seeks out those new ideas to meet her, her kids' needs. Stacy Cox, principal at Southwest, stated, Ms. Guzman's consistency and solid teaching practices have made her an example for others to follow. She is a strong and steady presence at Southwest who displays her passion for her students, for teaching and for giving her best each day.
And congratulations. Awesome, we are so thankful, Belton Rotary Club providing this. Have you been to lunch yet? With the Rotary Club? Okay, so you're going to get to go, right? With some of our Rotary Club folks and Dr. Muller's going to go, awesome. Well, thank you to them, we appreciate that. Okay, well, next up, we'd like to recognize our Big Red Community Partner of the Month, the Temple Rotary Club. And I believe Barbara Bozon and yes, she is. And Joanna, and, and the esteemed president, Robert Jones is here. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Oh.
Since October of 2010, the Rotary Club of Temple and its members have actively supported the Lakewood Service Club at Lakewood Elementary. Students participating in the club are exposed to important character lessons like truth, goodwill and better friendships as they elect club officers and run meetings similar to Rotary Club gatherings. Providing opportunities for fourth and fifth grade students to demonstrate leadership, character, the entire school is involved with the group's service projects. Sustaining a multi-year partnership that has connected hundreds of students to the service and ideals of Rotary has been possible thanks both to the financial commitment and dedicated time of many people. Accepting the Big Red Community Partner recognition on behalf of the Rotary Club of Temple will be Robert Jones, the current Rotary Club President, of Temple President, excuse me, and Barbara Bozon, Chair of the Lakewood Service Club.
We are so thankful for your commitment to our students, making a difference in our kids and thank you so many ways and our teachers. But this is a good one about our, about our, working with our students specifically, but obviously today we saw evidence that you take care of our teachers too, so thank you, we appreciate y'all. They have, it's long-term. That's great, great, thank you. Okay, that's all of our formal recognitions. I wanted to say a special thank you to everyone who is involved in our board training last week. Had a, a great opportunity to learn together and learn about our students. We had some faculty involved in that, but we'll have sent a thank you note to those folks for their involvement. And I also want to recognize Phil Hagerty. I don't know, did he just run out the door? Right on that, he snuck out, but Phil Hagerty, right as, I want to, I want to recognize Phil. This is, was Phil, will be Phil's last regular board meeting with us. Phil has served this district in such a great way and, and helped manage our money. As trustees, we are expected by the community to be good stewards and you have helped us be good stewards. We certainly wish you well and your health and, and your time off to be able to enjoy life. You've certainly earned that, you've worked many careers over a long period of time and every certainly earned that. You've worked many careers over a long period of time and have earned the opportunity to not work so hard. But thank you for what you've done in helping us set up our finances in a responsible way that can help us be good stewards. You've helped us particularly manage our bond funds here just recently, and we are so thankful for that. So thank you for your contributions to our students and our community. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, you want to go back to where we were?
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Muller, you want to come back up? I think we made it all the way through narrowing down our list of possible names. We have our top four, is that right? Belton Lakeview High School, Lake Belton High School, Belton Lake High School, and Belton Memorial High School. Is that correct? Okay.
All right. Next slide. We'll move on to colors. So you see the colors that were represented through the survey and also through our meetings. Red, black, white, gray, silver, gold. Are there other colors that should be on that list? Are you thinking in terms of red being a primary color or a secondary color? Are you thinking of combinations of two or three? With that, I'll just...
You know, Dr. Muller, you said red was a common throughout. We certainly heard that in our forums. We've seen that on social media. We've seen that everywhere. Does anybody not thinking red? We talked about this last month, but is everybody still, red's gotta be primary color?
I don't think so.
The question is, you don't think that? Okay.
No, I don't. And I thought during our forums that the mascot discussion should have come before the color. It doesn't always have to do with it, because when we said that, they said, "Aren't tigers orange? Why are we red?" I understand. But I've always thought that the mascot should come before the color, because in some cases, they are gonna be linked very, very closely.
Okay, so, what color besides red do you want? Do you have a preferred?
I think that the mascot should come first, myself. That's just me.
Okay. Does anybody else have a color besides red? Okay. Does everybody else agree that red should be one of the colors?
One of the colors.
Okay. So then the question becomes, what's the secondary? Currently, Belton High School is red and white. However, as we've identified, they're using black a lot as an accent color because white is the home away jerseys kind of issue. I heard a lot of people requesting black or gray-silver, which seem to go together, and gold. So what's the, what's your sense? To me, as long as red's in it, secondary color can be anything.
And ask it of somebody out there. Coach, what is the ruling again about the contrasting colors on numbers that we have to have? White has to be in there?
No.
Okay.
But you have to have a white jersey in a card, in every, all of the sports, basketball, football, baseball, softball, volleyball, basketball.
Right.
Contrasting. No sports, you have to have a light jersey.
It's not a white jersey, it's a light.
It's a light.
Okay.
Right.
But the contrast of the number was an issue. The number has to be legible from the press box.
It's basically just that you cannot have a, you know, a, a, a light red and a dark red jersey. You can't have white, you can't have white.
Right.
They have to be contrasted, so that's enforced.
Yes.
Right.
One timeout if you don't do it.
So you wanna, you wanna...
Okay, so if, if say gold was our secondary color, would that work? I mean, would they, would they let you do gold as the lighter color? Or would you have a white jersey with gold lettering?
Okay.
Okay.
And that's, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't do something and then he has to stand up and go, guys, y'all can't.
Yeah, nevermind. Well, it's an interesting thought, though, because if our Belton High School colors are red and white, but white is the, I never, I get confused because it's home and away depends on the sport, right? So it's already one of the colors, and it's going to be. It's almost like that's a default color regardless of what else you choose. So red and something else. So I, I like this gray and silver, gray or silver, or there's a Nike color, Coach, whatever, I forgot the name of it.
It's a smart drive anthracite.
Yeah, there you go. I forget the name of it, but there's an official color. But anyway, there's variations of the gray and silver that, that are accented that the kids like. So, so the question becomes, okay, Ty wants to go talk about mascots, and we could certainly do that, but does anybody want to narrow down or eliminate some options? Well, let me ask it this way. Is there a consensus that we want not just red and white? That we want a second color different than?
Yes.
Is that a, is that a consensus?
Yes.
Not? Are we, Mike?
Yeah, I think so. You know, and for me, a tender you would tie a little bit, you know, once we go down the road of a mascot, in my mind, that helps me a little bit with the colors. I mean, if we go like, like what Coach Morgan was talking about in one of the community meetings at Cavalry, for example, or if there's some patriotic theme to a mascot or, I can see where I would possibly want to reconsider colors, too.
Well, again, we're not making any decisions tonight. What we're trying to do is narrow our, our options. So if, if at this point, there's not a need or desire to narrow or take anything off, let's move off. You've kind of got colors and mascot together.
I like the colors that are on there.
All those are, are good options.
But I don't know why we've limited ourselves to those colors either. I mean...
We haven't. That's the question mark is, are there other colors? These are the ones that were, were commented the most in our responses, is how these are on the...
These are the colors that most frequently serve.
We're not, we're not limited to that. We're merely, this is the most, the feedback we got.
I could certainly eliminate some lavender or...
Yeah, we can eliminate some that aren't there.
I mean, with red, I just...
Yeah.
I can't see red in colors.
Well, let's talk about mascots. Let's bring that, because those were really combined together into the same question.
They were. They were.
As he gave us.
And the possible mascots were several from the cat family, tigers, bingles, bobcats, panthers, lions, and then some from not the cat family, like broncos. And then there were some others mentioned. So...
Dozens.
Are there things that, yeah, dozens and dozens. So are there additions to this list? Are there eliminations from this list?
Yeah. So what would you add or delete from the list? Anybody want to start?
Ty, you wanted to talk about this one, so I'll, I'll let you talk first.
I hate to be the pioneer on this, but the one I would eliminate would be tigers. And I know most people in HB are not going to talk to me anymore, but I've looked, I've researched it statewide, nationally. I can't see a duplication of a second high school following along with mascot or colors. It's typically, they go in a different direction. So that would be, my number one, I like the Patriots. But I'm the memorial guy, but I guess based on tonight, it's probably not gonna catch much steam, but I like the Belton Memorial Patriots. With blue being the primary, dark blue with red and whites, we'd keep the red. And that was my, that was my favorite. But that would be the number one for me.
I'd agree with that. I mean, to be the Belton, you're Belton Tigers two at that point. I mean, you're the second one, so I'd agree with that on...
I, yeah, keep going.
I, I mean, and I know people will be mad, but I think it downplays the tigers that already exist, and it's gonna downplay the ones that are coming along. It's gotta be its own identity to be but part of the community as well. So I'm with Ty. I'm glad you did that. You know, you don't want to throw it out there, but that was looking at going, that's the one I'd eliminate first.
Yeah, I, I did what Ty did. I looked up every district I could find. I actually used Google Maps, and I sat for two to three hours clicking on every community I could find that was bigger than us in the state of Texas. And then I would go to their district website, and then I would look at their high schools, and I would see if they had more than one high school. Did they have the same mascots? Did they have the same colors? Ty is absolutely right. I could not find a single one that if they had more than one high school had the same mascot, not one. I also, I found one that had the same colors. So that's done. Maybe there's some other places I didn't see, but he's, he's absolutely right on that. The issue that we're having here in our community is this distinct, but, you know, community, like unified but distinct, this whole, this whole thing we keep hearing. And we just, the red thing was so strong across every meeting that we had that you just couldn't, we couldn't deny it. Like, to me, I can't look, all these people who said, "It's gotta be red," you know, and, and tell them no. But when it comes to getting rid of tigers and doing something different for this new high school to give them a community, you know, a distinct identity, I feel like we had enough support. There was enough people, you know, it might have even been half and half, that were like, yeah, they need their own identity. They need their own mascot. And honestly, I'm not hanging my hat on what that needs to be. The only thing I know is it does not need, in my personal opinion, it cannot be tigers. It cannot be any form of a tiger. So a bingle, a white tiger, a something, something else that's a tiger, because that's the same thing. It needs to be a different animal or a different something.
And just to clarify, your rationale for that is because it's not done anywhere else?
Correct.
And I guess my counter to that would be, but if the majority of the people you've talked to and heard from say that's what they want...
That is not the case.
Certainly been my experience. The majority of people I've heard and read comments on social media through this, there's nothing that's even close as a second option. And how do we go, and for me, it's, I'm a representative, so, I mean, my, and we disagree on this, that's okay. But the argument to me of, well, it's not been done, I've heard many, many people say, "Well, that's what makes us unique. That's what makes us special." Well, if that's what you want, okay. Is there a downside to that? They get confused. And I heard our sports writers use their opportunity in their forums to write about how confusing it would be if we played each other. But as far as I know, none of them lost their jobs when we played the Stony Point Tigers on Friday night, which we won, by the way, which we beat. And it was tigers, and it wasn't a problem. And so, to me, tigers is a viable option because our community has asked for it. And so it's on the table. Now, that may not be a majority view on this board, but it's clearly a strong opinion of those in our community.
It's a very vocal opinion.
It's a...
It does not make it the majority, because we've not actually taken a vote on this with the community.
No, 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 no. And, and, yeah, again, to clarify, the, certainly, it's been a very strong, the majority of people that I have heard from over the last couple of years in this process have repeatedly said, and different kids, adults, have wanted us to keep that, and why are we even considering anything else? And so I've heard that. And that's why I say it has to stay on the table, from my view. If I'm the only one there, I'm the only one there.
And I would add that I was Tigo. So for me to say that I think that this new high school needs its own mascot is a big deal. And I think that there's quite a few Belton alum, not all for sure, that, that agree with that, with that idea.
Sure.
And...
Again, it's one of those things that's divided our community very significantly. Strong opinions.
I just wanted to offer just another point to consider. One of the things that we heard during our sessions with the middle school and the other folks is, and I'm not advocating one or the other, I'm just bringing this up for a point of consideration. If the new high school, new mascot on identity, I get that. But then, one of the things they pointed out was, what about the rest of the district? This will be the only school in the district that's something else. So you're in elementary school, middle school, and you're a tiger, and then you get to the other new high school and you're completely different. How does that ostracize the, those kids at that school? I just bring it up for consideration.
So the question is, do we therefore, if we do something different, have to change all the other schools or some of the other schools, the feeder schools, middle schools, maybe only, whatever? That's, that's the next set of questions. Do you want to change? Do you want to go through this process of naming mascots for 14 other schools?
To me, the most logical whole solution for that, because I thought a whole bunch about that, is to, currently, whatever the feeder school is, middle school, since they play sports, they're the ones that, right now, we would really need to worry about. If you're a feeder school for Belton High School, you're a tiger. If you're a feeder school for the other one, you change your mascot to that mascot. And if you, if we end up in a situation where we have, we have to redistrict, and say we've got a middle school that's split, we've got, half these kids go here and half, or maybe 60% of them go here, then we can come to a solution at that point, or we could say whatever the majority of that school is.
And that's a decision that's eight or 10 years down the road, too.
But I don't agree that they would all be tigers, except for this one. I definitely...
So it would have to change?
Yeah. You would have to do something with the middle schools.
Is that a fair, is that a, is that a fair, it would seem to me, if, if, if it's not the same, we'd change the middle school feeders, at least?
And I'm, I'm amazed by the fact that when, when we went through this whole, the whole, all these steps to, to vote and then get a new high school, that we, that this was even a part of the decision, was, I thought, once you vote to have a new high school, there was already gonna be something different. And so the fact that we're going back to being the North Belton Tigers or the Lake Belton Tigers or whatever, that, it, it, it just doesn't quite, and that's my personal opinion, and I've heard it a lot, but I've heard it both ways. But I, to me, I, I never even thought it would be on the table until it was put on the table. So, that's my opinion.
It seems as though, in the discussions, that the, the people that I've spoken with that are from outside of the area, from bigger communities, multiple high school towns, are comfortable with the idea of all the different concepts. The elementary's being different, the middle school's being different. That's what they do in big cities. Well, this is unique for us. We're a small town who's growing up. We're getting big, and we're having to make some not-small-town decisions. So I'm like, Leo, whenever the concept of a new high school came up, I never even dreamed that we would be thinking about same color, same mascot, because I've never seen it done before. And I get the, well, we can set a precedent and, and, and do, you know, change the world by keeping it the same, but, but it just, I haven't been able to make it make sense in my mind, just because I've never seen it. I'm just not comfortable with that, those concepts. And with the colors, do we pigeonhole the old Belton, Belton High School if we keep red? Do we kind of pigeonhole the coaches on the, the uniqueness? I know the volleyball girls wear black shorts, and we've had silver helmets, and we've done some different things. I think that's fun when you're a head coach, be able to pick your colors in your jerseys. Do we kind of pigeonhole you guys into just red and white if we go with red as the primary color? Okay. It used to be red and white. You topped the old timers, that was it. And when you've added another color to it, that was, that was blasphemy. So, just wondered on that. So put this together. I, and I've heard, heard, I don't know, Mike, you haven't gotten to weigh in. You want to weigh in?
I can, real quick, sure.
Yeah, go ahead, let me...
I'm kind of the opposite of Leo. When, you know, we were looking at adding a high school, I was one that just always figured, hey, great, we'll have another Lake Belton or Belton Lake Tigers. And I was happy with that. I was proud of that. I, that's what I just always imagined. And in talking to, kind of the opposite of Ty, and talking to people that have moved into town, they were always so amazed that we were Belton Tigers all over the place. That you started in kindergarten, pre-kindergarten as a Belton Tiger, and when you were in high school, you were a Belton Tiger. And I really liked that. I liked hearing that from people that were moving into our community. I liked the feel of that. And I was one that wanted to keep that. Unfortunately, throughout this process, I've heard input from people that I've known a long time and that are from the area that don't feel that way. And I heard it a little bit in the community meetings from people that have moved into the area. And I think there's a little bit of those people who wanted to keep the Belton Tigers in red and white the same because of the way we had the elementary schools, the middle schools, everyone was red and white and Belton Tigers. And so they were just naturally feeling the way I did, that it needed to be red and white and Belton Tigers. But I do believe, like Sue said, if we go down a different road, then we definitely need to unwind at least the schools that feed into that high school, so that there's not that feeling of, I've been a Belton Tiger all my life, and all of a sudden, I'm thrown into this other environment. So, I don't have a good answer. And I don't want to necessarily eliminate Tigers, but I think we're probably going to have to at some point, is the feeling I'm getting.
Well, so, so let's put these two, two things together, or maybe all three of them together. What's, what's your, I mean, is there something we want to, again, start narrowing the list or come up with an option? We've got to make a choice at some point in the future, and the sooner we start narrowing this, the better. You want to put the color and mascot together as a proposed, what you're thinking, and throw it out there?
Can I, can I just say one more thing in regard to our unity as a community? And that is, if we keep the red, we've got that. You can even still say, "Go Big Red," right? For, for both football games. You could do it.
Big Red Community and all that.
If you keep red, you could. You could. Technically, you can even keep that on the, on Fieldhouse over there, you know? And, and we can call it the Big Red Nation. I don't care what you do, but we could, we can come together around the red if we want to do that. And, and I know there's a little controversy over the B, but I think...
Yeah, I hadn't brought that one up. I was gonna do that in a minute, but that gets even more hurt. But what I'm hearing you say is, if you keep the red and change the mascot, that keeps the same but different?
It does.
That's the opinions, other opinions or thoughts? Some of you, I've heard some saying, "No, it needs to be totally different," and some of us saying, "No, we've heard people, it needs to stay the same." So there's a... So there's a compromise, perhaps, is other thoughts? Okay, if you want to, let's, on that, since you mentioned this, one of the things we heard come out more recently was, the B is more significant than the Tiger, because it's on the uniform, or on the helmet, or on the shirt. Um, and so, um, in our names, if Belton is first, it's still a B. Uh, that's a common, a common thing in our district. It became the question of, does the B belong to the high school or to the district? And that's a fascinating question, I heard.
It's, that's what's happening here.
Yes, and so.
We have a legacy at Belton High School, and a history at Belton High School. And I think that it dishonors that legacy when you duplicate it. One of the high school kids was in here, love the kid, uh, said something about hand-me-downs. He said, well, if you give the, the new high school all the same stuff, that's like hand-me-downs. And I guess this generation, like, we, we wore hand-me-downs, but this generation really doesn't. I, that really stuck in my mind when he said that. It's the hand-me-downs. You don't want to be hand-me-downs, we want something, we want to be our own.
And, and, and we also heard some others, high schoolers say, I want to be a Belton Tiger, too. And I'm going to be a Tiger, and I want to wear the B. And so we've heard that. So, right, they don't know anything else, and so the question is, what is the option?
That goes for the adults as well.
Absolutely.
That have grown up here and, and cherish that history and love it, and, and I get it.
Okay, so Janet, you were saying, keep the red and a second, a different secondary color, and change the mascot. Is there, does, I mean, what is another, does somebody want to throw an option? Is that an option that you all?
I don't know, did Janet, did you say, keep, because I, I'm all for keeping the red. I don't know that red has to be the primary color, but I think red has to be in there. I don't know if it's your primary, I mean, that's, you know, both her and I were talking, the, I like gold, but that doesn't mean anybody else is going to like it, and then whatever color he said that we can't pronounce the word.
The silver, silver gray, sorry.
The Nike silver.
Never mind.
You know, I, I, whether it's primary, I, I, I think red has to be in there. I don't know that I think it has to be the primary, but.
But see, if you go back to what Janet was saying, it's the Big Red Community, or the Big Red, but red does need to be the primary. And that's the common theme in her proposal, but that's a different way of looking at it, is a different one. So that's a different.
Well, if they're all tied together with some form of red, I don't think it has to be primary or secondary, it's just, it's the Big Red Community. There's, there's red in, in, there's red in every one of those kids, so, and as long as it's tied together, I think you could go either way with it.
Okay. Um, is there, is there, so those of you that don't want Tigers, do you have a proposal for another? Bengals was, if it's not Tiger, I've heard several and seen several comments, it's not Tigers, it's another kind of Tiger. But I heard some of you say, it's not a Tiger, and it's not any kind of Tiger. Then, I think Dr. Miller said, most of the other feedback was, we'll keep it in the cat family. And then there's dozens and dozens of other options that are out there. And so you get fun, the Belton Lake Anglers, or Bass, or Lakers, or whatever, you know, all kinds of, there's a son, there's dozens and dozens of those options. So my question is, if you're not going with Tigers, what are you proposing?
I do like the idea of keeping it in the, in the cat family, because we've got all kinds of cats around this area, Wildcats, and even CTCs Lions, and I mean, all kinds of different things. I mean, you keep going, we got, they're all around. Um, again, this is not one of those I'm gonna die on my sword for. But my personal favorite is Belton Bobcats, because it's nice alliteration, it's catchy, it's a Wildcat. We have them here in this area. I like it.
So you're proposing Bobcats as the, as a alternative mascot? Is there?
Oh, I don't dislike it. I liked the War Eagle, but I got voted down.
Is there anybody else who wants to?
You know, given the choices that we've got, much of public feedback, and, and, you know, there was that meeting that I brought up. I had heard erroneously that the name in the twenties was the Broncos.
It wasn't true.
Which in fact, it was just a publication called The Bronco. But Belton is a rodeo town, and it's a huge rodeo town, and it, and it's on the Chisholm Trail, it's, it, I mean, hey, it's a big deal. I like Broncos, because it does tie to our past as being a rodeo town.
So Broncos is, is one that.
Alliteration.
And, and you like, Janet's an alliteration person. So Belton's in the name, and you want to beat. So we've got one suggestion for a Bobcat, and one for a Broncos. Anybody else got a preferred alternative, and Tigers, obviously, but an alternative to Tigers? That you want to, do we want to eliminate everything? Yeah, that's what I'm hoping to do, is we can narrow this list. Is there an eliminating anything else, or, let me say it different. We have Tigers, Bob, if it's not Tigers, Bobcats, and Broncos as options. Anybody else have a preferred option to discuss amongst us? Okay, it's, go ahead, Mike. No, don't, no.
I will, I will say, hopefully quickly, um, and again, I'm struggling with eliminating Tigers, so. This is me just talking, right, this is me just talking at this point. Um, but I like Broncos, and I like the way Ty's thinking there. Um, but I also like something that Ty had mentioned earlier, um, Patriots, because I like the patriotic theme. I think there's an opportunity, if it's not Tigers, we've got to unwind everything else that's in that area, um, at the other schools. And there's an opportunity there to tie in some cool patriotic mascots at those, because all of the elementary schools are adopted by the units at Fort Hood, or, um, so just a thought. Not one that I've thought out very well, um, but just throwing it out there. But I think the Broncos is cool.
That wasn't my first.
Love Tigers.
That was just because it was up on the board. I like the Patriots, and the Cavalry was one, too, that.
Yeah, yeah, that was.
Okay, I'm gonna, let me speak to Cavalry. Everybody mispronounces that as Calvary. And there's a big difference between Cavalry and Calvery. And, and that one is alliteration nightmare, and so please don't do that to our kids. It'll be in the paper, Miss, it'll be cheered wrong, and that'll be, let's, please don't do. Cavalry is very different than Calvery.
Yes.
Sorry, Randy.
And, and I'm just, I, that's, I have a personal, I mean, I hear that wrong. No, no, I just want to make, I just, I, please don't do that to our kids. Come on. Okay, what other names? Other, is anything we want, you want to eliminate the other ones that we haven't mentioned?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, we've eliminated everything but Bobcats, Broncos, Patriots, and Tigers. Is that right?
I think so, yes.
So we've narrowed our list. Let me ask this question. So we're gonna, obviously, we're spending a lot of time talking about this, because we don't know what to do. Now, we've gotten lots of input from lots of sources.
Because they refuse to do it.
And, and, right, and they shouldn't. Um, it's not.
They don't want.
Smart.
So, we've kind of timeline this out. Are you, y'all want to make a decision next month, or you want to delay two months? How long do you want to talk about this? Are we going to be ready to make a decision next month, one way or another?
We have next month.
Okay, we're going to put this on the agenda, and we're going to go one by one. We have some narrowed down, some finalists, which obviously could change between now and next month, if you think of something else.
We may need another workshop.
Oh, we didn't talk, let's go back to colors, let's go back to colors. Red and what? Red and what? Is what I've heard, Ty said, no red, but everybody.
It should be part of the color scheme, but when you said, go Big Red, there's one go Big Red in this area. If we have two go Big Reds, why can't it be go Big Blue, or go Big Green, and have red as part of the color, so we don't have to repaint a lot of things? It can be part of the scheme. I was just thinking about that from a financial standpoint, leaving red in the color scheme myself, but there's one go Big Red.
It's okay. It's okay.
Okay, so, so we have some difference of opinion on the red, and what we do with that. Is there another thought of color schemes that y'all wanted? Back up to color.
Rachel, if you.
You can, please.
We're not trying to eliminate two right now, either, right?
No, I guess, you know, we don't need to eliminate anything if you don't want to. We're going to decide next week. Do you want to add or delete anything, and do you want to keep wrestling?
Is the silver or gray the one that you asked Morgan about?
Huh? The silver gray?
Is that the one you asked Morgan about? Okay.
I just heard, I've heard that a lot, and people, from kids.
I think we could get rid of the black and the white, because black, we already.
Is used.
We already.
Black is going to be an outline color, no matter what you do, right?
Black is a.
White is already our color.
It's a default, white is an off.
We'll have a white jersey.
So, so that makes sense, so really, it's going to be red, whatever other two colors. And if it's red, it's red and something else. If it's not red, then it's something else. Red, white, and blue.
Yeah, you need to have some.
Then you do a.
I don't think we should eliminate any colors at this point.
Okay. Again, let me, let's make sure we're clear. We haven't officially eliminated anything between now and next month. We're not voting on anything, we're not officially, everything is still open. We may get inundated, um, tomorrow, after people open their newspaper and read Merrill's story about what we have said or not said.
It'll be such a long story.
And we may get plenty of feedback between, uh, between now and next month, so. All right, y'all just lay it out, and we'll wrestle with it next month. How's that? That's the plan. Thank you, Dr. Muller, for that. Let's, uh, let's move on with our agenda, if we can. Um, y'all good with moving on? Okay, let's, uh, public comments, I didn't see anyone signing up. Did any, uh, any takers on public comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, and if you'll just bear with me, on this one, we have a very lengthy consent agenda, intentionally. Um, we have the minutes of, uh, the August 14th, 2017 special meeting, the August 21st, 2017 regular meeting, the August 24th, 2017 special meeting, the August 28th, 2017 special meeting, and the August 31st, 2017 special meeting. And I just want to pause and thank Connie. Connie did a great job of recording those community forum, uh, meetings, and capturing all of the options and things that were said. Thank you, Connie, for doing that, and getting all those minutes together. A lot of work, a lot of time to do that. We have the unaudited financial report for the month ending August 31st, 2017. And by the way, that ends the fiscal year. Y'all will note, that's the unaudited end, so that report kind of gives you the, gives us really where we ended the year, the unaudited and complete, but, uh, at, at that's, at this point in time. Uh, we have gifts, grants, and bequests, and, and on page 65, you'll see, uh, that we have one, uh, significant donation of tools to be used for robotics. It's not cash, but it's the value of tools that were donated for robotics makers, space, and classroom projects. We're certainly appreciative of that. Diana Slaype, and Leon Heights PTA, and Emerson Constructions donations also, thank you for them. That's just for information purposes. We have one expenditure over $50,000. This is a renewal of a contract for Growing Places Therapy Services, PLLC. Um, we have a resolution designating signatories for Texpool Local Government Pool Investment Accounts to add Deanna Clavel. The designation of signatories for First Republic Lone Star Government, Local Government Pool Investment Accounts, again, to add Deanna Clavel. And then we have Board Policy Update 108 affecting local policies, EF Local, EFA Local, EFAA Local, EG Local, EH Local, EHB Local, EIF Local, EL Local, GKB Local. Uh, and that all came from the TASB, uh, Update 108. Uh, thank you to Angela for helping provide the feedback on that. Also, uh, for the legal policies that we don't act on, but are given to us, uh, and they are adopted because they're given to us. Uh, we have revisions to board policies, CE Local, DBD Local, FL Local, FNAA Local, GE Local, GKD Local, and GKDA Local. Those are all lumped together, because those are title changes, specific to some, some changes we've had with our staff. Then we have revisions to BDB Local and BE Local. Those are the, the ones that we reviewed, uh, in regard to our official time of meeting and committees of the board. So, uh, as we've previously discussed. And then we have the, uh, 2017-18 Out-of-District Transfer Report. This is for review only, but we'll note that we have 441 total transfers, of which 195 are employee children. Uh, very similar to previous years in number, and, uh, uh, we also have the waiver request for maximum class size. I meant to ask, we're still at 21, uh, requests for this. This is a number that tends to change, and, and as students move in and out, and they get leveled off. But, um, clearly, we are at, at the growing point, and we're going to need to build another elementary school, right there. Uh, but we're submitting a request, uh, this year for 21 classes, uh, that will have, uh, one or two additional students in them, as noted on that chart. Uh, we have the Juvenile Justice Alternative Education Program Memorandum of Understanding for 2017-18. It's an annual renewal, uh, that we do, and hopefully, we won't need to use. The 2016-17 School Health Advisory Council Report. This is for review only. Very much appreciate the work of that group, and, and Robert Atmar, uh, works with them. We have the, uh, Appointment of the 2017-18 School Health Advisory Council. So thankful for those parents and community members willing to serve on that committee. We have the Certified Teachers Appraisers and Calendar for 2017-18. The Texas Lessons Study Professional Development with Education Service Center Region 12 Memorandum of Understanding. This is training, uh, opportunity provided for our teachers at no cost to us, that Region 12 is funding. Um, we have the Acceptance and Closeout of the Belton High School Roofing Project, Project B, Summer 2017, and Approval of the Final Payment of $73,365.15. Uh, noted that that project was completed on time and under budget. And we have the Acceptance and Closeout of the Roofing Coping Repair at Chisholm Trail Elementary School, RCSP 1704905159, and Approval of the Final Payment of, oh, I wrote 3,000, is that right? Boy, I hope that's right. The final payment, that was completed on time and on budget, also. Uh, and then we have the Board Administrative, Administration Operating Procedures that were previously reviewed, uh, and that we review annually. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? A motion for Mr. Callen, uh, second for Mr. Taggart. All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. The pass is unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Okay, um, just a couple of items. First, an update on enrollment and the start of school. Uh, as of Friday, our enrollment was 11,490 students. That's an increase of 413 students over the same day last year, and 371 more than our snapshot date last year, which comes at the end of October.
Say those numbers again.
11,490, 413 students more than the same day of school last year, and 371 more than Snapshot, which is the last Friday, which was done the last Friday in October last year.
We're still.
So we're still a few weeks away from that. So we expect to continue to grow over the next several weeks, and, um, by the time we hit the next board meeting, we'll be pretty close to that Snapshot number, so I can give you an update then. We have 155 new students at the high school level. We grew by that much. 75 at the middle school level, and the remainder, which I think is 183, at the elementary level. So a lot of high school growth this year, which we expected.
We need to build another high school, don't we?
We do. Uh, we have 18 students who are enrolled with us now as a result of Hurricane Harvey. I think that's a pretty significant number for us. Um, I'd like to thank Christina Wilson, who is our homeless liaison, Shawna Bell, who also works in that office, and all of our campuses, um, for their work to take good care of those students who joined us, um, after that event. Um, we've completed the process of leveling our elementary school classes, um, which really was a pretty minimal amount of work this year. Um, we had, as, to move some students, a handful of students out of Leon Heights Elementary, and I'm trying to remember, I think that was six-ish? Six? And, um, a, a similar number out of Chisholm Trail Elementary due to, um, the 22-to-1 requirement that we have. And so we did move, um, some, about 11 students, I think, in all, um, to bring those class sizes down. And, and aside from that, it was, um, a really smooth start to the school year. Um, we're in our fifth week already of school. Um, we did review our special ed staffing at all levels, and we did add a teacher, um, to increase our services at Beck's and Leon Heights Elementary, just looking at numbers and programs, and, um, making sure we have adequate staffing in those programs. And then we have posted a new, uh, special ed position at Lake Belton Middle School for that. Um, we're still talking about the high school, which is a little more complicated, so we may, we may do some additional things there, um, as we continue to study that. So next month, I'll, um, provide you with some demographic updates, just diving into that enrollment data a little bit, so we can understand, uh, what we have that's being submitted in our Snapshot.
Okay, the second item I had was, um, Superintendent Scholars. Expanding our Superintendent Scholars program was one of our goals for this year. Um, and, and the purpose of that was to increase student achievement on the SAT, um, and to expand our opportunities for our students in terms of college admissions and scholarship opportunities. So, um, I want to commend Christina Flores and, uh, for taking that work on with. So I want to commend Christina Flores for taking that work on with me and Dr. Love Smith. We've been working on that diligently since this summer, and we met with students early in the summer to come up with a plan, really just to talk to them about how we could get them to commit some time to improving their scores on the SAT. And they were so impressive that we said, "You guys write the plan, bring it back to us, and we'll talk about it." And they did. They wrote a plan with incentives and basically a checklist of activities to complete, which included practice tests and specific skills exams. And then we've been working to implement that plan with them. So we've gotten them logged into Khan Academy. They're using that as a free online resource to take practice tests. Christina has them scheduled into a class so that she can monitor their progress. I've been reviewing their progress. We've made personal contacts with students. And just yesterday, we met with them for a couple of hours over at Arusha's to have some study time and check in with them. And so we were able to spend some time with them. And so they're progressing, and we're really proud of them and their commitment to continuing to improve. Our next steps are working to systematically do some things within the school day for these students. But right now, we're really, we're trying to get these students prepared for the October 11th PSAT. So they're 11th graders. That's the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test that they will take on the school day. All of our 11th graders will take it at the same time. These are the students who were recognized last year as our superintendent scholars for having scored very high. So that starts with the 7th grade Duke Tipped program, and it goes all the way up through the 11th grade, and with that goal of really getting those kids as high as they can be so that they can get admitted to any school they want to go to and get some money. And so tomorrow night, we're recognizing our, this year's 7th grade Duke Tipped students over at the high school, and I invite you to come if you want to be a part of that and see our students. And the goal of that is, again, that leads to this, to that 11th grade year, and working on that goal of increasing our number of National Merit Scholars. So that's it.
Thank you so much for prioritizing that, for your effort.
You're welcome.
What a fun, fun opportunity for our students to interact with you and learn. So fun for you, but fun for them. Appreciate you doing that. All right, Ms. Sheller, you want to talk to us about human resources and addition of personnel?
Yes, sir. As Dr. Kinkanun mentioned, we did add one position, the Bex-Leon Heights split. And so that is the recommendation that's presented to you tonight. So that's that, and two resignations, and we have three open positions.
Three open positions for recruiting for. That's great. Motion to approve? Motion for Mr. Camden, second for Ms. Jordan. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item is our 2017 State Accountability Report. Thank you for providing this great information to us.
Yes. I do want to give an overview. This is of our assessments from last year, which seems so long ago, as we've already well into this year. I was going to tell you, it's going to be a very high overview because the accountability system is complex, and it is not designed to honestly be easily understood. It's a complex system.
Ironically, because that's what they have created, even though they claim they want it to be understandable, it is increasingly not understandable.
It is increasingly not, and it is all changing. So there's no need to go into the in-depth system tonight because the one that will be under for this next year is currently being revised. And so the biggest things to walk away with are that last year, we, the district and all of our campuses, and we're proud of all of the hard work of our students, our teachers in the classroom, our principals leading that instructional charge. We tested just over 17,125 tests, and we're proud of our students' achievement. There were four, and this seems like, I'm not going to go through that, because it's all going to change, but it's important to just know that every test matters, every student matters. They're counted multiple times within the system. We're looking at not only current performance, but growth and closing the gaps for our learners, and then are they ready for post-secondary challenges after they graduate. With that, you can see, we did put on the slides the standard, and Belton ISD at the standard in all four indices, along with our high schools, our middle schools, and our elementary schools. So everybody needing the standard is important. With this comes an area of distinction. And so just a little bit about distinctions. In addition to all of the hard work our campuses do with our students to learn material, they have an opportunity to be compared to 40,000 like them in the state. And they're deemed to be the most, based on their populations of size, economics, visual education students, ELL students, mobility rate. And then from there, there are different opportunities for our campuses to earn a distinction based on our advanced learners. And then other criteria at the high school level, including AP performance, SAT performance, and dual credit. And it's very exciting that with all the hard work of our staff, we had 38 distinctions this year across the campuses. Last year, it was 27. And our campuses were very intentional. Over the year, our principals studied schools like them. They knew who those schools were, and they sought to make some improvements. And so we saw that specifically, we saw increases in math and science, student progress, closing the gap in post-secondary. We're very, very proud of our staff. But really, at the end of the day, it's one test on one day, and the real work comes with our commitment to our curriculum. And so I put in here the charge and the district priorities that Dr. Kinkanun set forth because it's the work. It's our commitment to our ongoing curriculum and ensuring the equity for all of our students with a viable curriculum. It's making sure our campuses are safe with a mindset for learning, kids adhere, and then really looking at our advanced learners and their performance. And we are learning about House Bill 22 and the new domains coming out of that and our new accountability. And we'll see an evidence of advanced learning there, and we're making sure that students maintain their academic performance or improve from the year to the next. And then I always like to put, when we talk about the system, that it is one, one measure. And it's a quote that we've used now for several years, which really talks about how only one measure of our student success. It captures how they perform on one test on one day. And there are many other dimensions of success. We have a holistic definition. We look at how our students perform in dual credit courses, academic QIO, our CTE programs, our athletics, our fine arts, and our service and community. And that really defines our kids' awareness of success. And then I did have, including the packet, all of the specifics. We said that it's all accessible online, that talks about the various performance thresholds.
Well, and as we've talked about these earlier and got some preview of this, but these scores are extraordinary. And I think it bears repeating that while we only, we don't want to overemphasize them because we think the state does overemphasize them, it is still one of those measures that we can be proud of. And I know that our principals that are here and the staff have worked very hard to prepare our students, and curriculum staff worked very hard to prepare our students to succeed and to meet our mission of succeeding on these tests and in opportunities beyond just tests. But this is another great measure that shows we're on the right track. Now, we'll go back to what Leo said. This is where our focus has to be, and we can disagree about mascots and colors. And frankly, we can disagree about that, and we'll be fine. But this is what's important, in our achievement of our students. And this is where our focus has to be, and I think we all are in agreement. That's where we're going to be and what we need to focus. So thank you for that. I love the priorities and appreciate the focus on that.
And I do want to just mention, can you mention that they're here? But I do want to really thank our CNI department, who works with our teachers and our staff, and then our principals, because our principals are every single day leaving the message on instruction, and the importance of it, and the importance of professional development, and their commitment to our curriculum, and they need that charge, and it's evident and close.
And we can't say thank you enough for the work that you're doing. You are CEOs of a building and of staff, but most importantly, you're caretakers of our children, and you take care of them and you provide them opportunities. You are educational leaders, and you set the tone on your campuses. And we know that, we see that, we thank you for that dedication. Thanks for coming tonight, but thank you mostly for being who you are for our kids and helping them get an extraordinary level of distinctions and recognition. That says a lot. So thank you. One of the measures. Thank you, Deanna. Anybody else wanted to mention anything about that?
I'll just, Deanna alluded to it, but I'll say it again, that the system is changing again.
Of course.
And so we'll be adjusting to a whole new way of measuring those STAR tests, and that will be a little bit stressful for our system as always. And we have to study it and learn it and work towards it, but we have to keep it in perspective.
Great. All right, well, our next item, we don't need to take any action on that, that was just a receiver report. Our next item is to take action, consider taking action on the prevailing wage rate schedule for construction projects. Dr. Muller, appreciate you coming to present that. This is an important thing. We asked for this as we were looking at planning for our bond issue. How can we save money? How can we be good stewards of the tax revenues that we're going to receive? And we ask that we go out and look at this. I think Jeff was one of the first ones, and Leo brought this up as an opportunity for us to save some money. So thank you for doing this. Tell us where we are. Can you push your button? I'm not sure you're on.
Oh, sorry. Should I start over?
Nope.
Okay. All right, a little background. State law requires that school districts adopt a prevailing wage rate schedule for all construction projects. And the district can choose to conduct its own survey, or it can adopt the U.S. Department of Labor's schedule in accordance with the Davis-Bacon Act. And sometimes you'll hear that referred to as Davis-Bacon wages. Once the schedule is adopted, then all project specification manuals that are published by the district or for the district will contain a copy of the board's approved prevailing wage rate schedule. Now, the last time the board adopted a prevailing wage rate schedule was in 2013, and the schedule that was adopted was the U.S. Department of Labor or the Davis-Bacon Wage Rate. Now, we're recommending the attached prevailing wage schedule, which is not the Davis-Bacon Wage Rate. A couple of key features that are in the proposed schedule, as you see it here on the screen, is, first of all, adopting this wage schedule potentially saves, as was mentioned, the local taxpayers' dollars. Because generally speaking, it establishes a lower minimum wage rate than that which is currently found under the U.S. Department of Labor's Davis-Bacon Act. And I say potentially because it sets a floor, it does not set a ceiling for wages. The second thing that I think is important to note is it's been locally developed and reflects very current prevailing wages locally. Locally, local contractors, particularly in the areas of HVAC, masonry, plumbing, and electrical work, provide an input. And those are the areas for new construction that are oftentimes the most costly. So we very much have localized this wage rate survey. The process was that data was obtained for Bel County from the Association of General Contractors, the Texas A&amp;M Systems Office, Texas A&amp;M University Systems Office, the U.S. Department of Labor wage rates, and local contractors were surveyed. And you can see from the handout that if you counted up the number of job classifications that are represented there, there are 45 on that Excel spreadsheet. Only six of those 45 were lower under the Davis-Bacon Wage Rate. So again, you can see the potential savings to our local taxpayers. I think at this point, I will stop and...
This is great. First of all, again, thank you for taking us on. I know, worked with architects on this, appreciate you and Lou involved in this. You did, I guess, the survey, the actual work, data gathering, right? Thank you for that. But I want to defer to you guys in the industry. Is this, you like where this is headed? Is what we asked for? Is this...
I'd like to applaud you guys because you could have taken the easy road and just put $9 an hour across the board and been fine, but you actually, you know, did the work, and you can see that it's there. You know, we've got to remember that, yes, we want to save money, but at the same time, we're one of the largest employers in this area. We're setting precedence on what's going on around here, and we're educating students and putting them out into these categories right here. And so we need to make sure we're doing the right thing by people in general, not just taxpayers, because it's both. But you've done a good job of that, and I appreciate it.
Good. Great. Jeff, you got anything to add? You had brought this up earlier.
No, it's good work. I mean, it's, you know, if you look over it... Oh, I'm sorry. If you look over it, and I'm sure they know, you know, some of the things that don't show up on here, when you don't see classifications under some of them, but you see a high rate, that's because they didn't, you know, they don't necessarily have classifications for helpers. So your helpers who would normally be paid less because they're not licensed, they actually fall under that higher rate, and that's what you have to pay them under Davis-Bacon. So, you know, that's substantial when you're looking at a big construction project. You have a lot of helpers on those that aren't, you know, making that high rate that this would demand.
Great. Anybody else, anything new you want to add? Okay, well, motion to approve, and we just need to make sure we're doing this right. We're going to adopt, make sure we say that. Is there an official motion that's proper, other than adopting the Belton ISD? We are adopting the prevailing wage rate schedule for Belton ISD as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Motion for Mr. Camden, second for Mr. Taggart. Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, raise a hand. Passed unanimously. Thank you again, Dr. Muller, Lou, everybody, or Jared, everybody, for your involvement in this and to bringing to us something that is good for our community, good for our taxpayers, and really helps us do good work. So thank you very much for that. Okay. Issues or concerns for future agenda or administrative reports? Anybody need anything? Jeff? Dan? Mike?
Leo?
Hi.
Okay. I just want to add, we will bring back on next month's agenda the discussion about name, colors, and mascot. And I want to just put one little commentary on. We, I made the comment when we started this process that I didn't, that I thought it was likely that we wouldn't all agree because we reflect our community. And I think that's okay, because at the end of the day, I think whatever we decide on, it's a decision that we've made, and we'll move forward, and we'll be fine, because there's not a bad decision for our kids on this. This is a decision, and it's an opinion, and it's okay if we disagree and agree to disagree, and we come up with whatever the majority of us decide to do. So that's what we're going to do, and we're committed to trying to finish this and resolving it next month's meeting. Is that correct? Awesome. Well, on our schedule, just want to remember, Dr. Kinkanun mentioned the Junior Scholar Ceremony tomorrow, next Monday night, the Meat Belton for Military Families event is at the Harris Center. That's our joint effort with the Chamber of Commerce. Great opportunity to reach out to our community. The Tass- Tazby Convention and the Tazby Delegate Assembly is October 6th to 8th. Sue is scheduled to be our delegate at the assembly at this point, so we appreciate that. The Beef Belton Education Enrichment Foundation Red Carpet Event is October 10th. Yeah, October 10th. If you haven't had an opportunity to sign up for that and sponsor that, I sure hope you'll take that opportunity. A great event, and our foundation does a wonderful job of supporting our schools. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 16th at 5:00 p.m. At this time, 7:10, the board will go into closed session for consultation with attorney, deliberations about real property, and personnel. We will be back in open session before we adjourn, but I don't anticipate any specific add... We will be back in open session before we adjourn, but I don't anticipate any specific action being taken this evening. So thank you for joining us. If you won't be here, have a good evening. Everybody back? It is eight oh six, and we will reconvene in open session. Just want to follow up on naming school issue. One of the things that has repeatedly come up is the, the school that's being referred to as the Poison Oak Road. That is poison oak. It's in the Carriage House subdivision. Could we refer to that school as the Carriage House School? Or do you want to go through a lengthy process of naming an elementary school? We're not here to act on anything. Just looking for some. It is, yeah, it's in the Carriage House subdivision. It's identifiable. We've seen priorities on geographic location. Is that a, a name? Oh, well, I don't. Yeah. It gives me the, it makes me want a rash.
I don't mean to be difficult, I promise. But I think that if we have an opportunity to name it after someone or something historical, I would prefer that rather than just the neighborhood.
Yeah. And that is the question. That's going to take a lengthy process. One, and two, I'll just warn you, having been through naming, and Mike might, might not want to speak for this, no good deed goes unpunished. For every one person you honor, there are a whole bunch of people who will get their feelings hurt, who will say, you didn't choose our special person, who should be honored and is worthy of being honored. And so I've just. A little bit gun shy on that one personally. And so we have recent, more in recent years, gone with identifiable location or historical significant. So, but, you know, we've moved names, you know, we took Tyler off, and Tyler's still out there. We could put it back. But again, you can deal with dynamics of, will we say no to somebody unless you say, the priorities we heard on the high school were identifiable and geographical location. So to me, that's, when I read that, I thought, well, it kind of makes sense to go with that. If y'all want to open that up and have a discussion about naming, I'm certainly willing to do that. We do need to get a plating in process, and we need to have a name for it to plat. Is that right?
Actually, the city of Temple wanted that plating item on this agenda, and we weren't able to get all of the documents together.
So we're not there.
From the surveyor, but they, they will want it next month.
So, so be prepared for, we just need some guidance.
It does not have. It does not. It would just be nice for our record keeping for the future.
So we could call it the Carriage House Site, Plat, and that not necessarily be the school site. We can name the school site next year, but at some point, we need to name the school, right?
I like that idea better because I feel like, I feel like we need at least some process.
Oh, we need a process.
It has to be super long. But I feel like we need at least to process and think about it.
Okay. So we don't want to, again, we're not taking any action tonight, but if, can we feel like guidance?
Everybody's good with me doing that.
To the board, if you work towards a plating in with the Carriage House Plat, and then we need to come back with what our process is going to be. And how we've done it in the past has worked really well. What we did for this high school is very unique. We've never gone to this level of input, because we usually get plenty of input anyway on names.
We've never had another high school.
But a high school is very different, and we, and this has been a good process. And I love the process. And again, I'm okay with us being in, having an opinion.
And we're in open session, so.
Yeah.
The only other thing I want to say on that is, you know, it's so hard for people to move forward to the next step because of who we are, because we are so special, and our community is so bonded around this tradition.
Yeah.
But the very fact that we have to build a new high school, and the very fact that we had to go through this process and pass a bond and do all of these things proves that we are moving on to a new chapter. It's like any other new phase in life. Every phase you enter into life is exciting, and it's also a little sad because you always have to leave something behind. And that's kind of what we're doing. We're in this growing pain. It's like we just graduated from high school, we're going off to college, and now we've, we've got to make some decisions that sort of change who we are. And I know that we can do that and still be respectful and honored.
Yep, absolutely. And again, we're going to all be fine. If we disagree, and we'll end up with whatever vote we end up with, we're all going to be fine, and the kids will be fine, and the community will be fine, and we're going to have people mad at us at H E B regardless of what we do. So, you know, what I'm a little worried about is what we'll read in the newspaper tomorrow, because you just never know what you're going to get out of that reporter. So, yeah, so, so good luck with that. Okay, so you're clear on, we're going to call a carriage, do whatever, and then we'll, we'll work up a process for naming that, because that's going to be important about naming it as we go. Okay. Anything else? Last caller, everybody. Glad you could be here. Hope you feel better. Blessings for you. It's eight eleven, and we are adjourned.
Hey, that's pretty good, y'all. Take note.